Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Pennsylvania County Planning Commission meeting, May the 7th, 2019. Roll call, Ms. Meese.
Present.
Ms. Henderson.
Present.
Mr. Stowe.
Present.
Mr. Horn.
Present.
Mr. Haymore.
Present.
Dr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
And myself. Records show eight present. Will everyone please rise for a moment of solace and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. All citizens of the United States of America will join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country.
Our president's to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. No one has signed up. Does any citizen here wish to address the commissions on anything other than what's on the agenda? If not, we'll move on. The approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
We do need to make one revision. For the last case will be removed from tonight's meeting and will be heard next month.
I'll make a motion. We remove that from tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Horn, that the agenda be corrected as presented by Ms. Hayes. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's passed, eight, four, zero against. Approval of the minutes, April the 2nd, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the minutes as read.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Stowe, the minutes be approved as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's passed, eight, four, zero against. Chairman's report. No report from the chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment comprehensive plan and the best interests of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At 7:02, case R-19016 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case R-19016, Tommy Motley has petitioned to rezone 17.31 acres located on Chalk Level Road in the Callens-Gretner election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to combine with the adjacent form. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Motley is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Motley, will you come forward, please? Good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have anything you'd like to present to us other than what Ms. Hayes has already?
Well, I'll just give a little history of it.
Yes, sir.
My father sold the tobacco pounds off of that farm 50 years ago. Fifty years ago, you had to sell land with pounds.
That's right.
So that was the reason that this 17 acres was cut out. And I just want to put it back in. They zoned it when it came in with zoning. They zoned it all one at 17 acres that won't perk. So I just want to clean it up and put it back in the original state of the track of land that it was in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Motley? No one has signed up to speak. Does anyone here that did not have opportunity wish to address this case? If not, at 7:04, case R-19016 is closed to public hearing. Ms. Meese.
This is certainly in my area, Callens-Gretner, and I don't think any of the board members can deny, just look at the map. This lot, this 17 acres is surrounded, dominated by A1. So for that reason, in case R-19016, I make a recommendation that we ask the Board of Supervisors to approve this case.
Chairman, I second.
Motion by Ms. Meese, second by Mr. Haymore, to recommend to the Board of Supervisors the zoning be changed from R1 to A1. Any discussion? Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll?
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R-19016, by a vote of eight, four, zero against, recommend to the Board of Supervisors the zoning be changed from R1 to A1. At 7:05, case R-19017 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case R-19017, JDA Associates has petitioned to rezone a total of 98.66 acres located off Orphanage Road in the Chatham-Blairs and Westover election districts from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to subdivide into approximately seven lots using the 50-foot of state-maintained road frontage left from the developed subdivision. A proffer has been submitted. It's in your packet. The staff summary is also in your packet. Mr. Chairman, Billy Talbot is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Talbot, will you please come forward? Good evening. Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissions other than what Ms. Hayes has already presented?
I could give you a little history if it would help, a little background. This 98 acres is what's left of the land we own today, that we've developed over the last 35 years for the Fairfield Park subdivision. And this property, where we're intending to develop it, is more of the subdivision. That's why the 50-foot strips, entrance strips were left to this, which would have worked for a V-doc, a subdivision. But then, most of the land would not perk. We can get enough perk sites for these tracks of land, but we couldn't get enough perk sites due to subdivision. So the alternative for 2007 was to do a pumping sewer pumping station, which would pump everything back up to 41, which at that time was at a cost of about $300,000. Then the economy crashed, we put everything on the shelf, we just waited, and in today's market, it's probably three times that cost. So for us to use the land, if we can cut into the tracks with the 50-foot entrances that we have, we'll get some nice building tracks, some homes that will blend in with the subdivision, not take anything away. So that's our kind of have, we got to this point, that's our intent, purpose.
Mr. Talbot, I want to thank you for meeting with Mr. Haymore and myself this past Wednesday. You curled around and showed us, and you developed all the surrounding neighbors that ran out. Your company developed and constructed the homes.
Yes, sir. Yeah, my father-in-law, Mr. Wyatt, Earl Wyatt, started Fairfield Park in the 70s. And then my brother-in-law, Skip Walker, and I have kind of come into the family, come to the business, working with him, have developed all of it to this point, yes, sir.
And this proffer that you have offered in the package, for which we all have its right, the page before the map, states that this is really will be used strictly for R1. No A1 will be allowed in that area. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And also, as we discussed when we was meeting with you, the adjoining land, this is not spot zoning, because as I look at it, there's five different tracks joining this land that's already zoned A1. Is that correct, isn't it?
Yes.
I do have somebody signed up, so if you'll sit in the front, unless y'all have any questions for him. I have someone signed up, and then you get to come back to rebuttal. Mr. Guy Langford, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My wife and I own a home on Talbot Drive, and we will be backed up, our backyard will be backed up to the properties talking about. And since I've been here, most of my questions have already been answered. Changing it from R1 to A1, but all the restrictions of R1 will still be in place. That was one of my questions. And he also said it would be stick-built homes only, if I heard correct.
Yes, sir.
And I wanted to know where the entrances would be, but that was answered after I got here, so I don't need to ask that. The only other thing I need to ask is, the back of our lot is going to butt up against the new subdivision. It's a water drainage ditch, and that's the end of our property. And then there's a hill with woods. And I just need to know if that's going to be left as a buffer between our backyard and the new subdivision.
When Mr. Talbot gets to come back, we'll answer that question. I cannot answer that right now, because I do not know. Mr. Haymore might can address it, but I cannot at this time.
No, Mr. Chairman, I cannot, Mr. Talbot.
That's the only question I have left, if that's going to be a buffer of trees left.
But basically, you all follow this change of the zoning and the development of the property, is that correct? Except for that one question you have.
Right. You're right. That's the only question I have, and everything else has been answered.
Any of the commissions have question for you? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Talbot? You've heard the question asked. Would you like to address that?
Typically, when we build houses, whether it's on a lot or a tract, you know, we have to clear an area for the house, drain field area, driveway, that kind of thing. The size of these tracks, you know, we're not like we're going to be going to clean a lot of trees and land, an excessive amount. I can't say specifically behind this gentleman's lot what we'll be doing, but we have no intention of just going in and just clearing everything. We'll just be clearing for driveway, home site, drain field area, and a nice yard. That's our intent. Does that answer the question, okay?
I was about for that buffer of trees.
Well, you know, if we have no reason to take them down, then we won't. That's really all I can say. Because we just, you know, get the survey and done and that kind of thing. Yes, sir.
Any questions?
I got one. You're saying part of it doesn't perk? Part of that land doesn't perk?
Correct, yeah. Yes, that's correct.
You don't know where those spots are?
We've already, yeah, we've done the soul work, and we've got the spots in there that will perk, and they will relate to the areas where we can cut up to the tracks. Yes, we know the land will perk through these tracks. It's just not enough perking sites in it to do a subdivision, you know, with half-acre, three-quarter acre lots.
But it will be county water, isn't that correct?
That's correct, yeah. We do have PCSA water in the entire subdivision, yes. And it's accessible to all of these, hopefully, future tracks, yes.
Any other questions? Does anyone get, no one else has signed up. Does anyone came in late, did not have opportunity, wish to address this? Thank you, Mr. Talbot.
Thank you.
At 7:13, case R-19017 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Haymore?
Mr. Chairman, I, first of all, I want to commend Mr. Talbot and Mr. Walker for coming up with this type of idea to use this tract of land. It's going to be twofold. It's a win-win for them, and I think it's a win-win for the county to have additional tax base from these dwellings that will be on this property. We've looked at it, and the seven entrances that leads into it has this spread out across the whole 98 acres, so I don't think it's going to really affect anyone. So it's a no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned. So based on that, in reference to case 19-017, Mr. Chairman, I move that we send it to the Board of Supervisors to change it from R1 to A1.
Motion by Mr. Haymore to recommend to the Board of Supervisors zoning be changed from R1 to A1.
I'll second in the recommendation.
And that would be with the proffer?
With the proffer, yes.
As presented in the package.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Second by Mr. Dudley, and I would like to say I definitely agree with what Mr. Haymore said, and we were there in the neighborhood, the neighborhood waved at us. I mean, it's a very neat neighborhood, and it's going to be developed from where you've got gullies and honeysuckle and weeds and everything. It will be developed. So I definitely think it's a win-win for the county, especially toward a tax base. Any other discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll for the motion?
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R-19017, by a vote of eight, four, zero against, recommend to the Board of Supervisors the zoning be changed from R1 to A1. At 7:16, case R-19018 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case R-19018, Kenneth Yaman has petitioned to rezone five acres located on Mountview Road in the Westover election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to consolidate with his adjacent form. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Yaman is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Yaman, could you come forward, please? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissions other than what Ms. Hayes has already presented?
Not really. The only thing that, this five acres come off the original farm. I purchased it back in 71 when it come out of service, and I'd just like to put it back with the farm, make everything consistent.
Any questions? No one has signed up. Does anyone here that came in late wish to address this case? If not, at 7:17, case R-19018 is closed to public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Yaman. Any discussions? If not, Mr. Haymore?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Yaman and I have discussed this for a good period of time, and I told him that I did not see any reason why that he couldn't put that tract back with the farm. So based on the fact that it was with the farm to begin with, in case R-19-018, recommend to the Board of Supervisors that it be changed from R1 to A1.
Motion by Mr. Haymore to recommend to the Board of Supervisors the zoning be changed from R1 to A1, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Meese. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, call the roll.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Case R-19-018, by a vote of eight, four, zero against, recommend to the Board of Supervisors the zoning be changed from R1 to A1. At 7:18, case S-19003, open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case S-19003, Stephen and Anita Amos have petitioned for a special use permit on property located off Gloria Drive in the Callens-Gretner election district to co-locate for 195-foot telecommunication tower and compound. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Jonathan Yates is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Yates, will you come forward, please? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Jonathan Yates, I'm just going to make a few comments, but I would be remiss, Mr. Chairman and board. I work on towers in Virginia and throughout the Carolinas. What I really encounter, and which I've never encountered before, is a staff, Ms. Karen, Ms. Kathy. I asked 101 stupid questions. They never laughed at me. At least I didn't hear them laugh. No, you have some professionalism and some courtesy that one doesn't see anymore, and I just want to commend them to this board.
Thank you, sir.
I also want to thank Stephen and Anita Amos. The purpose of this is to provide an infrastructure platform for the licensed carriers to cover in the Callens area. It was a relief for me this afternoon. I carry a couple phones, and I got a break out there because no one could get a hold of me, and none of my phones are working. In designing these infrastructure platforms, you look for a piece of property that's where it needs to be for a network to work, but you also look for one that has those extra added features so it doesn't prove any kind of hindrance of those around. We want to deliver the infrastructure, but not in a manner that'll harm anyone, and this was perfect. It's 30 acres, 25 of which are heavily treed, mainly maple and oak. About five acres are a little bit cleared where the old house is and the corn barn and the stables. The tree cover was incredible. It was going to allow us to nestle in the facility. Will it be completely invisible? No, but it helped mask it. So this was just a great piece of property. Stephen and Anita have been great, and the purpose is to put in a facility that has room for the licensed carriers out that way, to bring coverage there. I'm here for any and all questions y'all may have.
Any questions for Mr. Yates? No one has signed up to speak for this. Is anyone here came in late wish to question this? If not, at 7:21, case S-19003 is closed to public hearing. Ms. Meese.
Mr. Chairman, I am sure that the people in Callens and Gretner are welcome in this tower, living in the rural area, as you said. So I have not received any opposition. I think it's a win-win situation as well. So in case S-19-003, I make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals that this case be zoned as indicated to A1.
Motion by Ms. Meese, second by Mr. Stowe, to recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals to issue this special use permit. Any discussions?
Just for the record, it's a special use permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. You deserve that comment he just paid you. Thank you.
Will you call the roll, Ms. Hayes?
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case S-19003, by a vote of eight, four, zero against, make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals that they issue a special use permit for obstruction of 195 self-supporting telecommunication tower within 100 by 100-foot area. That's all the zoning cases, old business. Ms. Hayes, you have any?
I do not have any, Mr. Chairman.
New business, Ms. Hayes.
I think Mr. Sides has something.
You got something? Great.
Mr. Chairman, we have one new business item tonight.
Yes, sir.
We would just like to propose for consideration for the Planning Commission, an issue that was brought to our attention, staff's attention, by Mr. Matt Rowe, who is our Director of Economic Development. And with your permission, I'd like to ask him to speak briefly on it, but just by way of background, our most intense industrial district in Pennsylvania County is the M2 heavy industry. And Mr. Rowe is out marketing numerous properties around the county that are zoned M2 heavy industry. And occasionally, there are questions that come up, and maybe more than occasionally, about what is the maximum height that's permitted in that zoning district? And right now, in our zoning district, the maximum height, the buildings in this district is 80 feet. And we understand from Mr. Rowe that that comes up as a potential hindrance with prospects, and we would like to consider the possibility of increasing that maximum height just in the heaviest industrial district in the county, potentially even limiting it to the larger tracks that are zoned M2 heavy industry. But it's not going to apply, you know, in every case. But I think, if your permission, Mr. Rowe can explain a little bit how this issue's come up and how it's played out in the past.
Good evening, Mr. Rowe.
Good evening, Planning Commission members, and I want to reiterate, as far as the previous gentleman's comments, as far as with regards to staff, when I brought this to Karen and Greg's attention, they immediately jumped on it, and they said, "Well, it's a good question. Let's go ask the folks that can make the decision as far as that question." I guess where I'll start is, is that really, the issue has arisen several times with regards to the southern Virginia mega site at Berry Hill. And I'll talk about what I can talk about, and I'll allude to what I cannot talk about. Unfortunately, in my job, and you guys know this better than anyone, in my job, we have to keep confidence as far as with clients. It's not that we want to, it's just the fact that we have to. We're dealing with publicly traded companies. We're dealing with companies that are making decisions that could impact employees that are thousands of miles away from us. And so it's one of those things where we have to kind of do that. So the way I will go about the story is a small company called Toyota Mazda. The project was called Project New World. The project ultimately landed in Limestone County, Alabama, and for a thousand job project, $1.6 billion of investment. We did an extremely good job in Virginia as far as keeping it under wraps. We were actually a finalist in the project. So all the attention was in North Carolina, North Carolina, North Carolina, and in reality, we were the alma from one-on-one. What we learned from that project was a lot, not only about the mega site, about our weaknesses, about our strengths. It also, of course, allowed the state to understand that we really have a really good site, which is resulting in a lot of that infrastructure investment that's coming from the private side and the state side that you're hearing so much about. That doesn't happen by mistake. And so what we heard from that, though, and in that RFP, or Request for Proposal, was that they required a maximum height, as far as zoning-wise, of 120 feet. We went through the process with them, and it's one of those things where on a project of that size and scale, of course, it's expected that when the time comes and it's public, we can go to them as far as to the board, Planning Commission, make that request on its merits, so on and so forth, and hope that the board and the Planning Commission see the value of that project and that it is in the harmony of the given zoning district heavy industry. Since that time, we have had additional clients, automotive, other high-tech industries, some that we are dealing with now, others that have excluded us, that have come in with heights of numerous heights of 140 to 150 feet. These are for buildings, of course, in your zoning ordinance. Smoke stacks, chimneys, and flues are exempt. So it's four walls and a roof, you know, is your definition of a building. And you're seeing more and more of that as the equipment itself is becoming vertically integrated or stacked. And so the question came up from a client that we're currently working with. If you want us to come to your community so badly, why do we need to go through as far as that extra permitting process when your property is owned heavy industrial, you have the largest mega site in the state of Virginia, and frankly, we have consultants now going from after the Toyota search and other automobile aerospace searches that have visited us, to going out into the world and telling everybody how great this site is. We've done a horrible job marketing the site, and that's about to change. And so the site consultants now are going out. And so because of that, that's one of the statements that we're getting back from site consultants are, you know, you got a great site, you got everything in place. If you really want to get that big user, then, you know, why don't you make it a little bit easier for them as far as to be able to come in to make that investment? And so as staff, I'm not asking, you know, or making a recommendation to you, it's simply a fact. And I just want to make sure that both the board and the Planning Commission have as much information as possible when you're making decisions. And if this change is ultimately made- And if this change is ultimately made over the next few months, we'll, of course, share it with the site consultants that we're dealing with. I think it will certainly please them. And I will say that I don't want you to feel like you're being pressured into a decision because we do not have a commitment as far as from a company at this time with regards to the mega site. And so this is more of a preemptive maneuver by us to continue to better position the site, where, of course, at this point in time, we've got 160 acres graded. The site is certified by the state as being shovel-ready. We're doing other certification processes. As the Chatham Star Tribune knows, and was made public by AEP, a preferred route as far as on their electrical line being run to the park for redundant power is in the works. And then, of course, as far as the new connector road through the Commonwealth of Virginia being proposed as well. And so all these pieces are coming together. And so the final piece is really just kind of looking at the land use codes and making sure that they match what it is that the community has said that they want at the park. And so with that, I'll certainly answer any questions I can with regards to the site in general, with regards to RFIs, review, you know, what I see as far as on a daily basis. But I will tell you that we've had four very large name-brand clients that we'd love to have in our community bring this up.
And this would make it more appealing.
It would make it more appealing, and it would also streamline development. What we're seeing, Mr. Dudley, is the fact that when, what folks are looking for is they're looking to make a decision at a mega site, and they're looking to be up and running in 16 to 18 months. And so this is just another month that you're able to shave off because they can't start construction, of course, until they get the necessary local approvals.
We're only talking heavy industrial zone, correct?
That is the issue that we brought up to zoning staff, and once again, at the end of the day, I'm going to defer as far as to your competent staff to ensure that it's worded in a way that makes the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals and the Board of Supervisors comfortable.
Go ahead, Mr. Haymore.
No, I was just going, are you talking about the mega park only? Are you talking about another locate, I mean, other locations?
What have had the most interest as far as with regards to this matter is the mega site. With things that are going on at the Klopman Mills property and hurt and going after food processors, so on and so forth, a lot of times, they'll have certain forms of features that would not be classified as a tower or silo that are also, you know, vertically integrated. And it's all just being gravity-driven. It just keeps costs down. So, for example, cold storage, the average cold storage facility that's being built right now is 140 feet, and the reason being is because it's cheaper to cool that facility vertically than it is horizontally.
Mr. Rowe, and I need Mr. Stowe's help because I think he is the only one who was on here. I believe in '96 or '97, we went through this, and the limit of that 80-foot was done by the volunteer fire departments. Have you all just, I'm sure you all have discussed this since we have made progress through the years, but due to the limit of our equipment, it was beyond our limitations to find. Am I correct on that, Mr. Stowe? It was, they were the ones that came before us. We was meeting up in the old courthouse. And it was the limitation, I believe, was 80 feet. We wanted to go up to 100, I think, and they said the equipment, our emergency equipment, we cannot handle. Has that been addressed with the EMS department that, what is the limitations the county has?
I'll speak to my end, and I'll let Mr. Side speak. It has not been, as far as on our end, just due to, once again, confidences and whatnot. It's certain that's can be brought up. From the perspective of site selectors, and you nailed it, that's one of the key giveaways that they immediately read into when they see that you only have an 80-foot, 100-foot. They're saying, "Okay, you don't have the adequate fire equipment in here. Why are we going to invest $1.6 billion into a community?" And frankly, let's face it, if somebody like a Toyota Mazda or any of the other large companies, you know, and the average, you know, the average look right now, we keep track of this, the average project size right now, that's considering the site, is about $1.9 billion and about, I think the latest numbers were about 2,600 jobs. Average rate is over 50. That's one of those things where we would easily go out there and fund whatever fire department they need for ISO certification one.
What's, you know what the ladder is, the new, or the recent purchase by Ringo?
You're talking about the height of the ladder truck?
Yes. I think, excuse me, Mr. Haymore, I think it's 80 feet. Usually, it's about seven floors is the average ladder truck's distance of travel.
I think if you recognize that this is like a subset of a small set, I mean, it's already heavy industry, and then it's only the largest of heavy industries. Most of these people have.
Their own fire department.
Fire facilities within in-house.
That's correct, yes.
I mean, one particular project you're dealing with, they have to have fire flow, water storage and everything.
That's correct.
As a part of their project, regardless of the volunteers' service. So if we did this, it would be carefully limited to the largest projects and special circumstances.
Other than height, that's all you're looking for, correct? As we're talking?
Correct. That's the only issue that's come up as far as with the clients through RFIs, Request for Information, with the site.
I would love to see something at the Klopman site that's vacant. We desperately need something there. A lot of jobs is lost and...
The company, they're not going to find a ladder truck to go up much over 100 feet on it.
I don't think so, sir. They would not.
Like he stated, though, Mr. Stowe, I retired from Owens, Illinois, which originally was Brockway Glass, and we were extremely fire hazardous. I mean, you talk about melting glass, but we had our own called a deluge system. In event of an emergency, you push one button, and you've got 1,000 gallons of water quickly, a deluge of water.
My concern is, why is that a concern of ours if they want to go up to 150 feet for the tower, building or something? They put their own water system control in there, wasn't they? But we couldn't reach it. We've got, we never have anything to reach it.
Your statement is correct. I mean, the types of projects, they're not going to put a billion dollars in the ground and not have adequate fire protection in place.
Yes.
They would have that. Look like me, their own.
Fire department inside, basically.
Why should that bother us with our fire departments? 80 feet is far as we go. They can go up to 200 feet, but they have water protection in there, calling it to build in.
One of the clients we're working with is actually, you know, we're looking at doing a redundant, what we do, we have a redundant water system, and then even on top of that, they're looking to put in a million gallon storage tank.
I can also tell you that Ringo purchased that ladder truck primarily, well, several, but Swedwood was the deciding factor, and it was not height, but width of the factory because you could stand on one side and couldn't reach halfway with high-pressure water. You had to get up with some height to reach over horizontally, not so much height-wise.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know what avenue we've got to take to get this done, but I think we should move forthwith.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, definitely, definitely. I agree.
We wanted to gauge the willingness and interest level of the Planning Commission. If it's okay with the Planning Commission staff, we'll bring back a recommendation at the next meeting.
Be great.
And we'll meet with Mr. Rowe and come up with appropriate language.
That's good enough.
Sounds good, does.
I don't think we need a vote on that because as a public, I think you've got 8-4-0 against.
Just see Karen, put it on the table, and we'll go from there.
Anything, any other new business?
Ms. Mies?
Chairman, I'd just like to say something. I've just met Mr. Rowe, I think twice. I am really impressed with him. He is really on go trying to get something here in that area in the economy. And so I feel like anything that we can help, as Mr. Haymore said, improve and help him to entice these interested to come, because the old adage is.
That's right.
If you lose, you lose.
That's right.
So we appreciate you.
Correct. The question is, what can we do for you? I mean, that's basically what we should be looking at, is what can the Board, any of the Boards can do for you? Let us know, and we'll be there for you.
I think from the Planning Commission, you have 100% behind you.
Well, with that sentiment, instead of bringing you a proposal at the next meeting, and then you having to schedule a public hearing at your next meeting.
Right.
Would you like to go ahead and make a motion tonight to have the information prepared to have a public hearing at your next meeting as a proposed ordinance change?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Haymore, that the Assistant County Administrators with the planning come with a proposal for the Planning Commission.
Okay, we sure will.
At June meeting.
Yep.
And I think also this makes me think about, I would like for us to take this as something of a learning experience that we need to start thinking of our zoning ordinance as a flexible document.
That's right.
You know, we haven't made a lot of changes to the document, and sometimes we tend to think, well, it's, you know, it's etched in stone, but it's not. We need to be able to adjust as we go for the better. So, you know, feel free to bring to staff's attention anything you see in your ordinance that you think, well, why do we do it that way? Doesn't quite make sense. And I told Ms. Hayes the same thing, that when she stumbles over language, and she stumbles over several times, let's change that. We can fix it and make it better.
Most sides, we need to vote on that motion, I think. So all in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. The motion's passed, 8-4-0 against. So we will be expecting a proposal next meeting. Any other business? At 7:40, meeting adjourned.